Talking to, you're talking certs, correct?
Yes, no, no police officers to be paid.
And as far as the advertising will be on our-
We could do that.
Signs.
There's a couple of different routes we can go.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, on the question. Alderman Wesley.
Uh, this to Frank. You don't even know if our cert people would even be interested in doing this again, would? Just put it out there. We're volunteering these people and we don't even know if they're interested.
Well, I, I think that that is open-ended with regards to the amount of participation that we can muster.
Okay.
So if nobody volunteers, then-
Exactly.
Nobody going.
Okay, I just don't want to speak for them and say-
No.
What volunteering you? To volunteer to Bensonville.
Well, I'm a cert member, John's a cert member, Newsio's a cert member.
Any other questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, discussion for the water rates.
Would you guys actually like an update from Bensonville in your packet tomorrow? I can talk to their staff member and put an update on the shuttle and things like that tomorrow in the packets?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Wilson? You're up. You want to take the lead, or?
You know, it's pretty... The memo, I think, spelled it out pretty well. We'd assumed a 15% rate increase to $1.95 from the DuPage Water Commission, from some previous communications we had received from them. Unfortunately, due to their current financial state, they had to raise the rates 21%, which is an extra 13 cents that we had not planned on. So really, at this point, staff is looking for direction from the committee and the council, whether or not to pass along the 13 cents, which would require us to change the ordinances that are in place currently to show that increase, or to absorb the rate increase at the current for one year, depending on what they do with the rates next year. It might be more than 13 cents, we might be able to eat into that a little bit. The current cost, based on the average consumption over the past few years, would be about $55,000. We did build that amount into the budget as a maximum exposure. Because at the time that we put the budget together, we were pretty confident that that 21% was going to pass, but we didn't build that into the revenue side, just because we didn't want to assume that we would, that you guys were going to raise the rates. So we built in a maximum exposure of the 21% rate increase, but built the revenues based upon what was in the ordinance. And we still passed the budget with about an $81,000 surplus for the water fund. So even if you were to absorb it, that was already built in to that surplus number for this year. So, just looking for direction, which way you guys want to go on this.
And when you say $81,000 surplus, you already took into consideration the CIP projects, correct?
Correct, yes.
Alderman Lewitin.
I had the pleasure this afternoon of going to the chamber lunch and hearing a very notable speaker say that there is an enterprise fund in Wooddale and that all water rates are passed on to the citizens. Do you still believe that, Mayor Johnson, right now?
Yes. The water system and the sewer system are both enterprise funds. That's philosophy of the city of Wooddale, that it has to pay its own freight. I wish staff would make that recommendation in their memo, that'd be helpful. But I, I do feel that you have to pass on this rate increase, although I will hear it from the residents, because there is most likely another rate increase coming very quickly. This just covers their emergency needs and they're already talking about raising it again.
Can I make, I'll make a comment on that, or question to Brad. So, me personally, I'm in the position of absorbing this rate in this economy. Residents are already struggling and whatnot, I don't want to just pass it to them. But if there is another increase that comes down, whether it be six months or whatnot, then we may have to look at it. I mean, we can't just keep absorbing everything either. Can't go into a deficit, in my opinion, but- Alderman Wesley, Roy. Sorry.
I guess this question would be to the mayor. The Water Commission, you were talking about the possibly another rate coming with the new law going into effect, waiting for the governor to sign. And I was reading that most likely that this board would have to resign. Do they have... Are they the ones that make the decision of raising these rates now? For the incoming? Board?
Uh, yes, they may raise the rates as quickly as in the next 30 or 60 days.
Again?
Mr. First and All, the representative from Naperville, I don't know if you were at that meeting, suggested raising it by almost like a dollar or some absurd figure to balance their budget and start building up their surplus again.
Mr. Wilson.
Okay.
I believe it was somewhere between like 73 and 78%, which would equate to, like, I think it was like a $1.13 or something like that. Yes, it was a pretty, pretty... Was it 70, I think it was 78 cents, which was 50% jump, so it was a pretty, pretty drastic measure, but...
Alderman Coles?
I read in the Daily Herald that the whole board is going to be voted out. They're going to put a whole new board in. That was in the paper to, this morning. The Daily Herald on the front page. DuPage Water Commission is going to be voted all out, everybody in it. So, got to watch what we're doing right now because it's going to be changing over.
Alderman Wesley.
Mr. Mayor, let's do a follow-up on the water rate for DuPage County. My question to you, since you've been attending those meetings and feedback with them, have we got a copy of their financial statement that they have done? They hired this firm to come out and do a audit all the books. Has, has our city, that are members of this organization, have we seen a copy of that report?
Uh, I've seen the report, I don't know if it's been distributed to you, but I have read it, yes.
Well, it would be nice to see what was in that report, that they found or didn't find, because I still say there's some problems with the money over there. My question here is, guys, I will tell you that this past weekend, we had another major water main break on Irving Park Road again, in front of the Jewel. It's a 12-inch main. That has been the third water main break in a 50-foot section in the past two years. Something's got to be done with that water main line down the line. It's going to have to be slip, cover, whatever it's got to be. We got bad water mains by Christie's. Ballpark figure that I got, this roughly, to slipline that whole entire line is $5 million for this city. And for us to go in and slipline that whole, whole line, the city don't have $5 million to do it all on one project. And if we start cutting down on this water thing, also, you're looking at a treatment plant that's coming online, or we may have to update some stuff in our treatment plant. I agree with you, Newsio. I think we need to pass this on right now. I agree we should revisit it. I really think we should strongly pass ordinance.
Teddy, what he said.
I said absorb it right now.
Absorb it. Teddy, what he said!
I ain't saying passing it on.
I don't agree with that right now. The thing is, I think we, as a city council, should have sent a loud message with our signatures on to this water commissioner that we are not going to sit here as a council and allow this to keep going the way they're doing, upping these rates, without even coming to us and telling us why this is happening. What is the reason now for upping it again? No one has told us why they want to up it again. Now, this, the reason why they're upping this too, is to bring the shortfall up. Okay? Now you're asking to increase it again down the line, 60 days or 30 days, to build up their enterprise fund. There's got to be another way that they could build up their enterprise fund some other way than strapping these communities like they are. So, I am asking that, Mayor, if we could get someone, Brad, have you seen that report?
I have not seen the report. I've read all the articles in the Daily Herald, the Tribune, about the report, the stuff that they were able to get out of it. But I haven't seen the entire, the entire report.
So, Mayor, I, I'm as a council member, just going to ask the council to give approval that that report be forward to our finance department to look into what is actually in that report and what there might be findings in that report. Because, and again, I think this council should send a loud, clear message to these people that we are not going to sit here and allow another 85% pay increase, or 85% increase, through the fact they want to build the surplus fund. When I read in there that they, a couple of months ago, furnitures, cars they buying, there's a problem there. And don't tell me there isn't, there's a problem there. It was right there, black and white in the paper, that they bought furniture, they want to buy cars. Enough, we haircut in ours, they need to cut theirs. So I really like to see a copy of that report.
Mr. Wilson, you may make a comment?
I'd say we'll see what we can do about getting a copy of that for you. If the mayor's seen it, I can well, speak to the mayor and we'll see about, what we can do about getting a full copy of that for you guys.
Alderman Shawkey.
I do have to agree with Alderman Wesley. I don't want to have to go back in two months and say, or three months and say we're going to raise your rates again without a good reason. This is an enterprise fund, we have to pass it on as we get it. If we get a report and find out what these people are doing, that's another story. Right now, we're being billed so much, we have to pass that on. We don't have a choice. As he said, we've got water main breaks continually. We need that, I was going to ask, what is the $80,000 for? It's to maintain the water lines, isn't it? That surplus of $80,000 somebody mentioned? Well, that's going to go very, very quick if they keep breaking like they are. So, I, I do not, I do not see pulling money out of other funds when this is an enterprise fund. Bill, would we get billed? We don't have a choice.
Alderman Lewitin.
My observation is that we have two issues here across the table that are being discussed. And one of them is not relevant to our discussion, though it is relevant to our needs. The discussion about what's wrong with the DuPage Water Commission, I think we should fold it right now, but not give it up. I think it should be pursued in a, on a proper committee meeting on the subject. But right now, the only question is, do we pass on additional costs that are levied on us? And the consensus, as I hear it, is, we don't want to, but we're obligated by the enterprise fund to do it. So, let's make a motion to pass it, and another motion to pursue the study of, what should I say, the deficiency in their brains? At a separate meeting?
Are you making a motion to?
Yes, I am.
Pass the 13 cents on?
Yes, and I am.
Motion. On the question? Dan's second. On the question, anybody? I think we better get a roll call here.
Alderman Shawkey?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Cadella?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
No.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And then I had that second motion that we should pursue. Was that a motion?
I don't think we need a motion.
It is a recommendation, then.
Mr. Wilson's already going to get us that letter. Mr. Coles?
I don't think we have any authority to investigate anybody that's on the board. That is handled by the state of Illinois.
Is it pertaining to the discussion?
Pertaining to the DuPage Water-
No, no, I'm talking to Roy.
It's for future meetings.
Next. Items, items to be considered on future meetings, commuter parking fee, question and answer, new solid waste contractor. Anything else?
Yep.
Alderman Wesley.
I'd like to have a full discussion on all the information to get from the Water Commission. We're the ones that, that pay the bill, we're the ones that pay them, and we're the customer. So, I don't know why we didn't get this report, but...
I think that's already on, right?
Well, when I-
You're going to get the report and make a report to us on what's going on?
Sure.
Any others? Alderman Lewitin.
I would like to take an opportunity to say thank you to, to Mark Helm of Walter Deutsch Associates. After the last meeting, I asked him a question about carbon footprint, and he took the time to write back a two-page letter on one question that was asked to him, and the copies were sent to everybody. And I think that, well, I just feel personally gratified that somebody took the subject seriously and gave inexpensive, quick-fix answers on carbon footprinting. And I, I'm not pushing anything, I just want to say to, say to Mark Helm, thank you for taking the time to send us this letter. And we'll discuss this next week, May the 27th, when, when we do discussion with the, the solid waste again.
Any other items? Too late.
What do you mean, too late?
Go ahead.
I don't know what committee comes under. But, I want to talk about, uh, movies in the park. Does that come under finance, or does that come under public works?
Movies in the park.
Finance.
Okay.
Can I reject that one? No.
Why you want to reject it?
No, no, it's okay.
It's for the citizens.
You got, understand that, Jeff? Movies in the park?
Motion to adjourn. Say it.
Some discount he's talking about, what?
Oh.
Go ahead.
Discounts for low income, for people that make, for underwater rates. We have a policy now for, Brad, you want to help me out here? Go-
Just real quick, a quick broad brush. We have a, a discount for, it's called the senior citizen discount on your water bill. And it uses the very low income standards as designated by HUD. And if you fall below these thresholds, you get $5 off of your water bill and $5 off of your garbage bill. It only qualifies, you have to meet the very low income standards, and you either have to be a senior citizen, a widow or widower with dependent children, or permanently disabled. And that was started back, that ordinance was originally passed back in 1992. And there's been, we've had a few phone calls lately questioning, you know, if, if that amount should maybe be higher, or if it should be a little, if the classification should be broadened to encompass more people. And so Alderman, R. Wesley was, I think, looking to see if, if we wanted to broaden that or change the amount or something to that effect.
So we're going to have a discussion on this? So what you're asking?
For future.
So we couldn't absorb the 13 cents, but we're going to give bigger discounts, okay? No problem. I'm just curious. Motion to adjourn? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good.
I'd like to call the order of the May 13th Public Health, Safety and Judiciary Committee. Roll call, just show the same members are present. I'd like to make my motion to approve the meeting minutes of April 22nd, 2010. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Number four is a report and recommendation on an, an increase in the Class P liquor license from seven to eight. I would like to make a motion that this be denied. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any conversation? With the roll- Pardon me?
Why you're in favor of denial?
Are you, are you making a statement? Did you want the floor? Did you want the floor?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Alderman Lewitin.
I just wanted to ask, what is the argument in favor of denial?
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
My opinion is there's just too many liquor licenses being established in this committee. I mean, everyone wants liquor license, I mean, how many more are we going to give away? I mean, it's time to, for this council to sit here and stop giving liquor license like there's water. It's, it's time to step to the plate. We, we allowed some, and every time someone comes in, we add. I don't think it's right to add another one. That's my, my argument.
As well as that there's only parking for two cars in front of this establishment. So, can we vote on it? Would you please call the roll?
Alderman Shawkey?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Cadella?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
Next item is the items to be discussed at future meetings. One item is the General Assembly passed a bill reducing court fines and fees due to communities. I'd like to have the chief speak to us about that problem, and if we can handle that in the local court so that we don't have to be sharing more fees to the state. If we can do that for the meeting of, first meeting in June, I'd appreciate it. Or the first committee meeting in June. Another item is exotic pets. I'd like to have that on the agenda for the first meeting in June. Anybody, any other items? None? If so, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Call the Public Works Committee, the order, make the minute taken note, the same people are present. I need a motion to approve the April 22nd, 2010 minutes. That will be my motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Question changes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item is report and recommendation for compact, running base under new pavement. You guys should receive the update that they put together. We had this discussion about the impact, how they packed the ground for the street. Want to give us update or a quick overview of your memo?
Sure.
Uh, this item came up some months ago, and it's been sitting for a while on our items for future discussion. I prepared the memo you got in your packets, and I'm, I'm really covering kind of two topics with this. One, just the question of testing, and the other, the question of the pavement composition itself. The two are kind of linked, and I, I don't remember the origin of the original request to put this on here, which one of those items we were looking at, but again, the two are closely linked together. I, I guess, a couple of things I would point out is, there's a lot of different variables in this, a lot of different ways you could do it. You could probably get 10 different engineers and contractors in here and get 10 different answers or recommendations on how to do the pavements. We typically follow IDOT standards, but it has to be pointed out, most of our projects are not state-funded. We don't have to follow IDOT standards, we can really do whatever we want. And this is listed on the agenda as report and recommendation. I think it just as easily could have been put as a discussion items. I'd like to hear all of your thoughts on this topic, if you have any strong opinions on it. Nothing has to be decided or changed tonight. Again, I gave a couple of thoughts in my memo on it, but I'd like to hear what you think, and if, again, if some, if you want to change something, we either do it tonight, or something could be brought back later.
Listen, Newsio, please.
Dave, on the second page, under discussions and recommendations, talking about this year, we're doing Elmhurst, 6-inch aggregate subbase, and a 10-inch subbase is proposed for Deer Path. If, if Deer Path is done this year or next year, that's another discussion. But, what was it for School Street?
Uh, School Street was four inches.
So, why is Elmhurst a 6-inch? Just out of curiosity, I mean, don't we have a standard that we follow, or?
What we've, the standard we've followed over the years is four inches, that's what's been done. Two things on Elmhurst, Elmhurst has a lot, the soil borings came back with a lot of unsuitable material, a lot of topsoil. So we're undercutting for that. Now, that, that undercut, which is a foot, is not counted in that six inches. But knowing we have that bad soil, you know, I always like to have a little bit increased factor of safety on that. So that's reason number one. Reason number two, if you remember the, all the rain we had last October, which caused some difficulties with the school street, road bed, we had to do some undercutting, we had to do a little bit of extra work out there. Lot of extra rolling to get the ruts out as the vehicles were going through. Putting in a couple extra inches will help out if we run into that situation again. So those are the reasons why we increased a little bit for Elmhurst.
And the, the 10-inch sub, subbase, so are we putting in 10 inches underneath that 6-inch? Is that the standard, or depending on the street? Like, I heard when we did Royal Oaks, their base is terrible. I mean, is that a street where you're going to have to redo the whole subbase and then do the aggregate on top of that? And then asphalt, or?
Yeah, it depends on the street, depends on the results of the soil boring. If it indicates a strong, you know, subgrade, strong dirt, basically, and stable dirt underneath the street, you can do less. If it's, if it's soft and weak, or topsoil, then you would do more, but it tends to be done on a case-by-case basis.
So each street could be different, it's not-
Could be, yes.
Can I continue? I mean, I brought this up because I was watching those guys do the alleys, and I saw them kind of grade it out, after it was dug out, they pouring some stone mix or some was mixed, and they were going back and forth with the Bobcat. And basically, they put a little steel down the center and, and that was it. No, I, I really didn't see any compaction, or... That's, that's why I brought this up, I mean, shouldn't we be having? I remember when I did a parking lot, right here in town, they had to pass a test, some kind of compaction test, had to be a 95% or 98%. We don't do that anymore? Or that was just for?
We do the density testing, where someone actually comes out there with the nuclear gauge and tests it for all the asphalt. We haven't been doing that for the stone underneath the asphalt. You can do that, it's not, you can actually do it on the, on the dirt itself underneath the stone. It's not as accurate, it's more accurate to just watch a heavily loaded truck drive over and see if it's pumping or rutting or not. So we, we can do that, you know, IDOT allows that, but there's, have a lot more flexibility on that. So we haven't done it in the past, but we could certainly add that. Again, it's one of those things where there's different ways of doing it. It's more money to do the additional testing, and again, as you get further down the pavement layer, it gets to be less important. But it's something that could be done.
But as far as the compaction on, like, say, the alleys, they, we don't do that?
Right, well, the specs didn't call for a certain percentage of compaction on that. It's, so it is a visual inspection of that stone that's underneath it. I would say, again, that when you get into the, to the thinner stone layers underneath the pavement, like with the alleys had, it's less there to provide strength for the pavement, you know, the concrete is really providing the strength out there, and it's more for drainage and have a platform to work on. I guess that would, that would probably be my best explanation, that it's the, it's the concrete and it's the ground underneath it that, that provide the majority of the strength for that pavement.
Anything else? Anyone else?
Dave, I suggest that-
Dave, I suggest that we do follow, that we do do the testing on anything to make sure it is done the correct way. Okay.
Okay. I'm certainly open to that. Probably my recommendation would be, in conjunction with that, that we go with at least six inches rather than the four. It's, it's, more material is easier to compact, and it's easier to pass the test if you have more on there. The four inches is probably going to cause some problems getting the test to pass. So I would recommend more testing. We go with a little bit thicker. And again, we've been doing that with, you know, doing that with Elmhurst Street, doing it with some of the roads anyway. Maybe just make that as a standard, do it with all of them.
I think, I agree making it standard. I mean, does everyone else agree making it standard?
Yes.
I have a yes. John? News? Joe?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Yes, so make it a standard. All right. Anything else on that item? Mayor, you don't have your hand up? The other item is a recommendation, Deer Path Road sidewalk survey request. As you know, in your packet, there was a survey sent out, which we just did, that we are doing on it in Ward Four. The majority of them are against sidewalks.
We got a petition in Ward Four.
So my suggestion is that we don't move forward with these sidewalks over there. Because the survey came back fifteen against, eight for, and one not sure. Does Alderman have to say anything on that? Alderman, Joe Coles?
All right. I talked to Dave, and I told him that as long as there's fifteen against, then don't put any sidewalks in. And he agreed with me. And, but, he said that he would put in swales alongside the curbs, and that'll have to go, that swale will have to go. And he says it'd be easier for him not to put in sidewalks than it would to put sidewalks in. So I, I'm going to, according to this survey, that's what they want. That's what they'll get.
Here's your place.
Dave, on that street, is it, is the street going to be made wider than it is right now? Or is it the street already at width? Because it kind of has some gravel, and then the swale. You're going to put in the curbs and the swales, or the drain ditch, whatever, behind it?
It'll be widened a little bit. I mean, the width varies a little bit, so it'll be widened probably a couple of feet. If nothing else for the, get the curb on there, so there'll be a little bit widening. I don't know the exact amount, probably varies, but most of our streets are about twenty to twenty-two feet wide. We're going to be coming in now, and we'll be twenty-five feet back a curb to back a curb. So they'll be a couple of feet wider than what it is. Not anything dramatic, but a little bit.
With the ditches behind the sidewalk, does that mean there's not going to be any sewers going in? Is that what you're telling me, or?
No, we want to preserve the ditches because we want to preserve that storage volume. There's a lot of drainage problems out there, and we really don't want to start filling those in. So there'll be a storm sewer in conjunction with that. We might take existing ditches and make them more shallow than what they are now, and I think that makes it easier to maintain for people. But we're going to do whatever we can to preserve the volume. So there'll be a storm sewer. There has to be a storm sewer to accommodate the curb and gutter. And there's actually an existing storm sewer on the south side of the street there. So we'll enhance that and use that, and keep some shallow ditches as well. Obviously, not putting the sidewalks in makes it easier to do the ditch work, because if you put a sidewalk in, you have to tighten up that ditch so you have room for the sidewalks. I guess if you're looking for an advantage to not doing sidewalk, it makes it easier to do the drainage and to keep those ditches.
I got a, I was driving by the other day, and it looks like, I see the ditches on the north side of the street, and then all of a sudden, at one house, the ditch is gone. It's like dirt's been covered in. I don't know if somebody put a pipe all the way across this property and covered the pipe. What happens in a case like that if there's supposed to be a ditch there? You're going to put one back in? Is that what you're telling me?
Normally, yes, we'll reestablish that ditch. I don't know the details of the particular house you're talking about, but in general, yeah, we'll reestablish.
But what if the owner put a, at his expense, put in a pipe and covered it?
If it's on our right, or way we got the right to take it out?
Yeah, we'll pull it out, and we, you know, we did some of that with school street, and we'll do some of that probably with Elmhurst. It's really, it's really the way it has to be. If we don't do that, we run into problems where, you know, usually in these areas, the houses are lower than the street, or even with the street. If we don't do that, we're just going to be draining our right of way back onto private property.
Right.
We just want to avoid that at all costs.
Okay. Alderman Joe Coles?
Years ago, the city had a policy that if you wanted to fill in the ditch, they would bring the pipe in, and you could, they would dig it out and lay the pipe in, and then cover it up. That was many years ago, because that's what they were doing along a lot of the streets, so the ditch wasn't in front of the house. But the city used to do that. But then they got away from that. They put in a steel pipe, and they had nothing but trouble with the steel pipes collapsing after they rotted away a little bit. That was done years ago. And that was free.
Hey, done, Joe?
Yes.
Alderman Shaw.
I personally have a problem with it because of the safety factor, but this is what the people voted for, and I will make a motion that we not put sidewalks on Deer Path between Central and the city limits.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, report and recommendation, the safety ornamental railing installation on the Salt Creek Bridge. My concern, and it was brought to my attention, is with the grade separation, we weren't sure if that bridge was going to be refigured over, or what they were doing with that bridge. I'd been assured by Jeff that he has talked to Ron Crawl, who has been on that project from, since CT took him under the wings. My question is, what's this railing look like?
There's a picture of it on the back of the memo. It's exactly, I believe it's the same as the fencing on the bike bridge over by the Target. Same prairie-style fencing. I can give a brief background on the project if you'd like me to.
Oh, can you make it short?
Yes.
I'll make it short. Just a brief background. The mayor worked with Representative Rubbleletti and was able to secure the seventy-five thousand dollar grant. We already have the money in our coffers, so it's ready to be spent. It's a hundred percent funded, so there's no matching on our end. The grant is supposed to be geared towards improving the bridge along the Salt Creek area. Staff is recommending installing this safety railing. It also acts as aesthetic improvement, because it's going to be prairie-style in the downtown vicinity. Talked to a couple manufacturers for the fencing. It's going to come in under seventy-five thousand dollars, so that shouldn't be too much of a problem. We do have a timeframe that we have to spend this money by, no later than June 3rd of 2011. Mayor, I don't know if you have anything to add about the grant?
No, I think this would be an appropriate use of the money. If there's surplus funds, is there any chance we can put some prairie-style lighting in as part of the bridge project as well?
I don't see why not, yeah.
Good. Excellent.
I have, um... Are you going to tell me the money's there? Because I don't see it, I didn't see it on a separate line item in the budget for the grant money that we have asked for several times now.
Uh, myself and Mr. Wilson are working on that. It is in the, we do have the check. I've seen the check. I got the check myself, so I know we have the check. So it is there.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve Salt Creek Bridge safety ornamental railing installation, not to see, well, it's a grant, so...
We're actually going to, this was just kind of to approve the project. We're going to have to come back with you after we go off our bid, because we're going to go off our bid for the project. So we'll come back. We just want an approval on the idea of going forward, using the grant on this.
Mayor, we don't need it as a motion, do we? Okay.
So we'll come back.
I recommended staff moves for. All in favor?
Aye.
All with life.